I will call the order, the February, I mean, March 16th, 2021, Slayne County Board of Commissioners. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Commissioner Shadwick. Commissioner Sparks.
Here.
Commissioner Vedrickson.
Here.
Commissioner Wees.
Here.
Commissioner White.
Here.
Please, would please stand for a flag salute and then remain standing for a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
If everyone can make sure that all microphones and other electronic devices are muted when you are not speaking so that remote observers can hear the proceedings clearly, I would appreciate it. Now, if Brad, our IT director, could instruct everyone on how to raise their hand in the meeting.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Assuming that users are logged in with the Zoom client, if you select the participants icon at the very bottom of the screen, this will unveil toward the very right-hand corner of the screen, a raise hand feature that will let the host know that you would like to speak in the meeting. Thank you.
Okay, and thank you. At this time, we will move into our citizens input. And where citizens may speak on the county government pertaining to items not on today's agenda and usually held to three minutes. Is there anyone who'd like to speak at this time?
Is the mask mandate, is that going to be?
Yeah, that's on the agenda.
Okay, so I can wait till?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes. Okay, thank you. Okay, at this time, we'll move to our consent agenda, which consists of approval of prior minutes, approval of tax rule adjustments, approval of accounts payable and payroll, and approval of public forum agenda as presented. Are there any commissioners who wish to add or delete items from the consent agenda? Hearing no objection, the consent agenda will stand as approved. We will move into the action items.
Item number one, Resolution 21-2327, re-declaration of state of local public health emergency with Michelle Barkley, Emergency Management Director.
Good morning, Michelle.
Good morning. I'm here today to ask for an extension for the state of local disaster declaration. Our operational focus is still to provide resources and support to the vaccine clinic as well as offer sheltering to the community.
Michelle, excuse me, could you speak a little closer to your microphone? Or if that'll help.
Is that better?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
So, we're still focused on supporting the vaccine clinic and sheltering for the community, which can't be done without a valid declaration in place. I would like to note that there is currently some legislation, Senate Bill 273 and House Bill 2416, that are being reviewed that could eliminate the state's disaster declaration, which would in turn eliminate the resources that the state is providing us to offer sheltering and support the vaccine clinic. They did meet yesterday on this issue and are expected to release a conference report this morning, but as of right now, I haven't seen that yet. So, I'm under the impression now that the disaster declaration is set to expire on March 31st. If that is the case and it does expire, I'd be more than willing to review this current disaster declaration that I'm asking for an extension for and reevaluating if it's still a need in Slayne County if the state is not declared.
Okay, thank you, Michelle. Okay, are there any questions or comments from the commissioners? Are there any comments or from the public to wish to speak? I will bring you back to the mission for more discussion or possible action.
Mr. Chairman, I move we adopt Resolution 21-2327 as presented by staff.
It has been moved and seconded that we approve Resolution 21-2327, re-declaration of state of local public health emergency. Are there any further comments? If not, I'll call the vote. Commissioner White.
Aye.
Commissioner Wees.
Aye.
Commissioner Vedrickson.
Aye.
Commissioner Shadwick.
Aye.
Commissioner Sparks.
Aye.
Motion passes five to zero.
Thank you.
Next item.
Item number two, review of Amendment One to Resolution 20-2297, the review of Section Six Mask Mandate with Jason Tiller, Health Department Director.
Good morning, Jason.
Good morning, commissioners. Just waiting on as soon as Brad can pull up the slides. Well, this is the masks for Slayne County COVID-19 update from March 16th. Next slide, please. Looking nationally, the numbers still continue to decrease even from the last few reports. U.S. cases are down again, so are U.S. deaths. Next slide. And that same trend is continuing in the overall number of cases, hospitalizations, and statewide deaths, which are all good things to see that are happening right now. Next slide. As we look at what's happening in the county, here are our current reported numbers as of yesterday. One thing I want to bring note to is that in the last two weeks, we have only had 66 new cases in the last two weeks, which is a huge improvement to look at when even just a two to three months ago, that might have been a single daily count of new cases. And thankfully, we've only had one new death in the last two weeks as well. The hospital is still holding at about two to three patients at a time they're COVID. And our two-week percent positive rate has dropped significantly to 2.81% and our two-week incidence rate is down extremely at 79 per 100,000, which all of this puts us in a very good position right now. Next slide, please. So, looking at the cases per month, you can see for the month of March, and we're about halfway through that, we've had 80 new cases for the whole month, which is significant improvement over February. And at this point with the daily rate, this is more reflective of what we were seeing back in August and September. Next slide. And again, just looking at the comparison of deaths per month, again, just seeing that continued decrease from the heights in December. Next slide. Some additional updates, testing is still available at the Church of the Cross, although utilization of that site has significantly reduced, but it is still available. End date on that is still to be determined and some of that will depend on the funding and some of the legislation potentially that Michelle mentioned earlier. Next slide. A significant amount of things happening around vaccinations. By the end of this week, we expect to have vaccinated 11,000 or more people that live and work in the county, and that'll be about 25% of the adult population. Right now, we're still working on finishing up those Phase Two priorities. And based off the governor's announcement yesterday of Phase Three and Phase Four jointly beginning on March 22nd, we are starting registration for those phases. Again, there's the website that people can go to register at. The Johnson &amp; Johnson, of course, has been approved. We did receive 500 doses of that. Our primary focus of that has been trying to reach homebound individuals, homeless, those that are hard to reach, those that are in congregate settings. And that has taken a significant amount of planning to be able to accomplish that at this point with our partners, but I think we're on a pretty good track to be able to have all of that used up and then just have Johnson &amp; Johnson and Moderna primarily as are vaccines available here in the county as time goes on. Next slide. Again, if you are trying to find out what's happening, these are still all of the multiple resources, radio, social media, the FAQ Friday videos, signing up for our Vax Facts and Press releases, and also our slayne.org coronavirus page. Next slide. Another update that people should be interested in. Recently, there's been an update made to the amount of time after being fully vaccinated or having the virus where you don't have to quarantine. And so now, if you are within that six months after finishing your vaccine series or six months from having the disease and you are exposed and asymptomatic, then you won't have to quarantine, which is another incentive to get vaccinated if you have not or were not planning to and you haven't had the disease yet. That will significantly help you in the long run. Next slide. So, when I say fully vaccinated, and maybe make sure that that's clear, that fully vaccinated means two weeks after your second dose of either the Pfizer or the Moderna or two weeks after your single dose of Johnson &amp; Johnson. That two weeks is necessary for your body to have mounted the appropriate immune response and be considered fully vaccinated. CDC also and KDHE have adopted some changes that more affect gatherings in private homes, but basically if both parties have been fully vaccinated, they can gather in small groups in private homes without masks or social distancing. This guidance also says that gathering with unvaccinated people from a single household is okay as long as they are at low risk for developing severe disease. But still, just continue to, that does not give a permission for a free-for-all or just to take mask off if you're vaccinated. It's still important while we are trying to reach specific levels that people still maintain distance, wear their mask, avoid crowds, wash hands, stay home when ill, and those types of measures. Next slide. Another update. KDHE recently added New Jersey or New York, as well as the countries that are listed on here, to the travel quarantine updates. So, if you traveled on or after March 12th to New York or New Jersey, you will have to quarantine upon your return. The same thing if you should happen to go to Estonia or Palestine or if you went after February 26th to those countries that are listed on here. So, we continue to watch and monitor what's happening with the variants. I have placed a screenshot from KDHE's website of the current situation as of yesterday compared to the last one. And those numbers of cases attributed to the specific variants have continued to go up. Kansas is seeing some more cases. We have not seen any cases here in Slayne County at this point, but this is just a situation that we continue to watch and to monitor. And we hope that as we continue to vaccinate at the rate that we are that we can stay ahead of the development of any variants here in the county. Next slide. So, this is what everybody wants to know. I still recommend for the time being that we continue the mask order. We have talked with our partners and have come up with recommendations about when to consider either loosening or removing the mask order. One of those is a target of 70% of the adult population vaccinated. Understanding that normally herd immunity is determined around 70 to 80%, however, that percentage has not been fully determined for COVID. And this is just a target. This is not a hard number that we absolutely have to reach. We would just like to get close to that 70%, which would be about 28,000 to 29,000 adults in the county. One of the other things as a recommendation is to see multiple days without new cases. And we also understand that there may come a time where the overall vaccine demand is satisfied and then that may also spur conversations too of what do we do next? And with that, that ends my update in regards to the mask order, and I will take any questions.
Okay. Are there any questions or comments from the commissioners? Is there any public that would like to speak at this time?
Commissioners, my name is Denise Ward. I live here in Salina. I just want to talk about the mask mandate for a moment, not because I think that we need to stop wearing masks. What I am here concerned about is the limitations that it's still putting on restaurants and bars. The social distancing guideline that is placed on bars and restaurants says that we have to keep our tables six feet apart. By doing that, even if the health order expires, the mask order actually still limits our capacity. It doesn't really put limits on gatherings, but by making a space our guests out so far, it keeps us at almost 25% capacity. I mean, you're still hurting all of our businesses. You're hurting all of our employees. I think he's gonna, I heard at the city commission meeting last night that he was going to recommend that the health order expire. I urge you to please let that, please quit putting limits. I mean, closing at midnight, we have employees who are losing entire shifts. I mean, that's an entire day of wages that they're losing because we're having to close two hours early. And that's all I have, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments?
Dennis Benoit, I come, I live in Geneseal, but I consider Salina my hometown. And I'm here again to talk about the mask. Is it scientific that by wearing a mask, you are breeding, you are breeding your own bacteria? Is that an issue? And that the people, the doctors, talking about, "I'm a healthy person. I'm on a zinc regiment. I'm a healthy person. I don't need to cover my face." A mask should be done by somebody that is sick or elderly person. I have several strikes against me, but I have no fear of the virus. And I had one other issue about how you count the infection rate. Can I talk about that right now?
We still have a couple of minutes here.
Okay. This, I know you follow the CDC guidelines for infections.
Sir, could you?
And most of their guidelines, is that correct?
Sir, could you speak into the microphone?
I want to, 14th of April of last year, the CDC and the NIH had a meeting. They changed the definition of case. Due to the trackers, the change meant one confirmed, and that goes to the tally. Well, after that change that was agreed upon by the CDC, I want to know, are we following the CDC guidelines? That one case is now with the trackers, they have to have their information counted. They're going to have on an average, just an average, 16, 16 probable cases of virus infection. Is that added to the confirmed case and is that number 16 and one, 17, is that what goes to the infection rate for the grand tally?
And let me ask, I do not know that. Jason, can you answer that, please?
Yes, I can. No, we count positive cases, which means there is a positive result. Early on, when testing was not readily available, there were a few cases that if they met specific criteria, meaning that they were in direct contact with someone who was positive and that they developed all of the symptoms and likely lived in the household, that they may have been counted as a probable, but those were very small in number. Every six summertime, I believe, when testing was more readily available in healthcare settings, every case that we have counted since then has been a lab-confirmed positive case.
Thank you, Jason.
Okay, well, I also have a problem.
Your time's up.
Okay, okay.
Thank you, sir, thank you. Good question. Any other comments? Okay.
Bruce Mary Meyer from Salina, Kansas.
Good morning.
I was kind of wanting to know why our surrounding communities have dropped all of their mandates. They've gone back to regular living. Our state capital allows you to be in there with or without a mask. They leave that up to the individual whether they want to wear a mask or not. Why is it that we still are on all of these mandates? We are grown people and I think we should be able to make our own decisions and same way with the businesses, whether they want to abide by these mandates or not.
Okay, Jason?
In relation to other counties around us, they have looked at their own specific data, which that's the problem when you start comparing counties to counties because each county is different, each county has a unique situation when comparing their data. And I don't know that all of their recommendations, and I'm trying not to speak out of term, but I don't know if all of their recommendations to drop things were always in concert with what their health officer was recommending. I don't have the specifics for each of those counties around us, but that is my best estimate at this point.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments?
My name is Marie Scholastico, and I moved here about a year ago. I grew up here. And what I'm, I mean, I think if people want to wear a mask, that's great, you know, but I just wish we had a choice because I, you know, take care of myself and, you know, I'm a hairdresser, so I know all this sanitation. I'm driving to other counties to do business because I'm tired of the mask mandate. You know, I just want us to have a choice. And I own my own business for 17 years and, you know, so I know the responsibility of what some of these businesses are going through here. And it's hard, you know, and I don't want to drive to other cities to do business, but that's kind of what I've been doing to, you know, get around it. And I'm respectful, I wear a mask, and if someone asks me to leave or if I didn't have it on when I walked in the door, I leave. I don't make any complications, but that's kind of what I'm doing. And it doesn't really, I'm getting frustrated because, you know, I moved here, I grew up here, and it's making me second guess it because I don't know that I want to live under these conditions and there are other places that have options. And I'm a good citizen. I just paid my property taxes yesterday early, you know, so that's all I have to say about it. But I just thought it'd be interesting to have a perspective from someone who, you know, lived here and moved and then came back. So, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Good morning.
Carol Woody, Salina, Kansas. You know, we're all dealing with the mask and I would love for it to be a choice, but we also have to keep in mind while we're talking about all this virus, the people that are staying in homes because of depression and the children, same thing. I have friends, I have friends that won't leave their house because they're so afraid. I really, really think we need to move on. Let businesses open, get things back to normal. This waiting and waiting and waiting, it's been over a year. Please, just give it a try to get back to normal. And that way, businesses can move on and quit losing money and quit losing business and closing down. That's all I'm asking, at least consider it. Don't just go by, do we have to get to zero before we can move on? On some of these statistics, I just, I don't know. Thank you for listening.
Yes. Okay, yeah, there's a lot of different avenues and different directions and all I can say is that I, Mr. Tiller, I think, has done a fabulous job in the whole Health Department and the Salina Health Facility, putting it on at a JCPenney. I just been there, done it, and it's a, it's a, the vaccination is working well. I know people also that have been out there that have, I get phone calls from the guy about every month and a half going, Roger, you know, when's his vaccination? Because it wasn't about the mask thing, it's about when is the vaccination going to get here but where I can go out. And to me, when somebody says, okay, like yourself just mentioned, oh, it started a year, I mean, or it's been going on, this just pretty much started a year ago. So, it's, we had to go through some areas of understanding of what this virus is, how it was going to affect people, what was going to happen before the vaccinations got started. And I look at it as that, that's kind of a rushed deal. I look at it, it's been way, this has been going on a long time. I look at the whole United States as going, this is, this is, I look at the world. This has devastated the whole world, not just Slayne County or Salina, Kansas. This has devastated the world. All I can see is that I hope that the surrounding counties, I pray that they, everything works out great for them. I look at Slayne County, I, when he was just, Jason was just talking about, his next presentation on the public health order is next. So, I look at some things and we don't know where it's going. So, just give it a little time and we will get there. So, that's. Yeah, one more thing, yes.
I'm sorry, I just, I want to say one more thing. Do you not think that the, and I'm not against masks for those who want to wear them. I think it's a wonderful choice, but that's what I mean. It's a wonderful choice, it should be. I don't understand how touching your face 50 times and especially children, taking them on and off and sharing them with a friend. I, that's why I'm wondering, is the mask really that good of a thing? I've seen documentaries, I've listened, I've read those. I don't understand that part being so important.
Yep, okay, thank you. Any other comments?
Mr. Chairman, we do have a hand raised.
Okay.
Renee Meyer, please unmute.
Yes, I, I'm concerned about the comments. I really, really think that we need to listen to science. Yes, business is important, money is important, jobs are important. I've been there, done that. I'm not working now partly because of COVID. Ultimately, though, if we don't have our health, what else matters? So I really am supporting Jason Tiller's recommendations. And yes, it is hard, it's not easy. But hang in, we don't know about the new variants. And we're lucky we haven't had that at this point and hopefully won't. But we don't know. So I think it takes a lot of patience and maturity to hang in and do what science tells us is the best choice. Thank you.
Okay, Renee? Okay. Next item?
Mr. Chairman, we do have one more hand raised.
Oh, excuse me. Thank you, Brad.
Hi, I think it's for me, right? Okay. So I have to go against what she just said. The county needs to get back to where we were. We need to get people out of our house. We need to get back to seeing and, and developing our people in our county. There's no reason why people who don't want to be out of their house can't stay there. If the majority of the people don't want to wear a mask and come out of their house, that's the majority of the people. We need to listen to the people. If you don't want to come out and you don't feel safe, stay home. But if you do, let's get out. Let's get back to normal. What's wrong with being normal again? That's my piece.
Okay. Thank you. Okay. Anything else? Next item.
Item number three, Public Health Order with Jason Tiller, Health Department Director.
Hello, Jason, again.
Had to make sure I unmuted. So as I have mentioned, we look at all the data. I just went over all of that. The current order is set to expire at 11:59 PM on March 21st. And my opinion is that with the decreasing, continuing to decrease numbers, also that we did not see any kind of increases after raising those limits and capacities three weeks ago, our, with the deaths lower, the hospitalizations lower. I think at this point, the best thing is to let the Public Health Order expire at that time. Now, one other thing I want to say is we're talking about these. Keep in mind that the Public Health Order, the mask requirements that the city and the county both have in place, all of these are multiple layers that tried to close up holes as far as responding to the virus and responding to the impacts of the virus. Which is why I am comfortable with letting the mask gathering order expire at this point, because we use data to drive its implementation. And I think that is also driving its expiration. But on the same token, to drop everything at one time, I think would be a mistake. If we let the order expire, we continue to vaccinate people. And as you have seen, more people will be eligible next week. So we'll be able to continue to vaccinate more people and it just put us in a better position that when, without the mask gathering order and then when the county commission decides to, decides to take some sort of action on the mask order, we will be in a much better position to not see any type of undue consequence from throwing the gates open all at one time. That's my comments on the, the mask gathering Public Health Order at this point.
Jason, this is Commissioner Vidrickson. I want to be clear on this, that the mask mandate and the health order are two separate situations. In other words, if the, if the, if the Public Health Order is set to expire, that does not mean that we're out of the mask mandate part, portion of that. I mean, it's not a portion of the mandate, is that correct?
That is correct. The mask mandate and the Public Health Order are two completely separate items.
There, there are more items, though, to the Public Health mandate than just a mask mandate. I mean, is that also, does that affect the closing times of the bars, as an example?
Yes, sir.
So they would be able, on March 21st, they would be able to go back to their, their normal hours? Is that correct?
On the 22nd, they would.
Or the 22nd, that's what, yeah. At 11:59, okay. That clears that for me.
Commissioner Wees here, Jason. As far as the mask gathering, businesses would be allowed to go back to 100% occupancy at that time also? Or is there still the six foot with the mask mandate?
So the six foot would become a recommendation. And we are working on stronger messaging to ensure that that recommendation is still well-known. One thing to consider, too, even before this, especially when we're talking about events and event organizers and such. They routinely reached out to us even before the mask gathering order was in place to discuss what actions that they needed to take in order to try and ensure that their event was conducted, not only in relation to any type of rules or regulations that were in place, but also in conjunction with whatever the best practices were. And I expect that relationship to continue as we move forward.
I don't know if I'm clear on that, Jason. That was very eloquently said, but you're going to have to, you're going to have to dummy it down for me here. Will, will the six foot be a recommendation? Or is it tied to the mask mandate? Or is it tied to the mask gathering?
So within the mask mandate, the only thing it says in the mask mandate, and let me just a second, I had it pulled back up here, is there is a section that talks about people who are seated at a restaurant or establishment that offers food or beverage service, can remove their mask provided they maintain a six-foot distance between individuals that are seated together with only infrequent or incidental moments of closure. Athletes can do that as part of a, as long as there are six-foot distance. So there is still some distancing in the mask mandate in order to have those exemptions for removing the mask. More so in the mask gathering order was the requirements for reduced or a, a cap on capacity of a facility. Thank you.
Any other commissioners?
Well, before, before we leave, Mr. Tiller, and I want to, I want to relate this as my thoughts and my thoughts only. It's not reflective of anyone up who sits up here as a commissioner. This is what I think as a commissioner, it's what I think as a citizen. And, and let me assure you, I respect every single one of you out there with your opinions and the varying parts of your opinions. Mine happen to be somewhat different, as it would be with Democrat, Republican, you name it. Mine are a little different than some of you and agree with some of you. I certainly want to get things back going the same. What I want to do, though, I want to support Jason Tiller. He's had twelve, and his staff at the, at the Health Department have had twelve months of bashing. They've been exposed to all sorts of insults and so forth. And it's, and it's not their situation. He doesn't sit over there on Seventh Street and make a decision on Tuesday morning that we're going to wear masks or that we're going to have a health order. He's in constant contact with the CDC, the KDHE, Salina region. He collaborates almost daily with Salina Regional Health Center, with the Salina Family Physicians, the Family Healthcare, on, on what to do, what is best for Sling County and, and Salina. He, he is doing his very best. And I, for one, really want to thank him and his entire staff, along with the staffs of Salina Regional and Salina Family Physicians, Dr. Robert Kraft, Dr. Rob Freelove. They've done a marvelous job in face of all of this. And, and, and the, we're now, you know, getting the results. It's, we're getting down there where we need to be. And, and I've heard a lot of comments about, we need to have a doctor in this position, not just Jason Tiller. Well, I would like you to come forward with me the name of a physician who wants to go to work at Salina as the Health Director and take that half a million dollar a year cut in pay or whatever it is that it would take to, to fill that position. Most counties in Kansas, you may not be aware of it, their Health Director is, is called the County Commission. I don't think you want to, I don't, no offense to my fellow commissioners, but I don't want them to be my Health Director, I can tell you that. And you don't want me either. So I support Jason Tiller. I support the Sling County Health Department and everything that's going on with them. When I ran four years ago, I said I was going to follow the direction of the Health Department, and I'm still going to do that. And previous commissioners didn't follow that. And then there was turmoil to no end. So I'm hopefully, I, I'm glad to hear him say that March 21st is going to be a target date, March 22nd, I should say, is going to be a target date. And let's all keep our fingers crossed that that's going to happen. And from there, I think the mask mandate will take care of itself. So, thank you, Jason.
Jason, I'd also like to say, thank you for your work. The numbers that we're having, we're not, our cases are lowered, things are looking better. And that's not in spite of, of the mask mandate or, or the Health Directive. But it's because of that. It's because of the step-up of vaccinations. It's because of everything that we're doing to get this county and this city open back up, to get back to that normal living that we all want, every one of us. And I'm, I'm happy to hear his recommendation on, on the health order. I applaud him. But I think we still need to be diligent. We still need to get shots into arms. We need to protect ourselves while this is happening. And, and that light at the end of tunnel is getting larger and brighter every day.
And I'll agree with a lot of it. It's like, one of the other things is that I gotta, I just want to say is that I think a lot of the things that's happening, the numbers going down is because of Jason Tiller and this stuff. But realistically, we all know it's because of you, the citizens, because without wearing the mask, I, I feel that it's like, with you guys not doing what you've been, let's say you've been asked to do, I think the majority of people have really done a great job following the guidelines and issues that's been put forth of you. I just want to say, I think that is what one of the major causes is or the reasons why we're going down to help with the, the thing. So I just applaud all of the citizens of the, the county, the city, really everyone around the area that is, every time they come to Salina to shop, do something, I think almost everyone has done a great job of walking into the store with their mask on, following the guidelines and keeping their mask on. And, and everything has done. So whether that is the whole thing or not, but that's just another one of my thoughts. But I, I just want to thank you all for doing that. Okay. Any other comments on that? Next item.
Item number four, RFA 137-21, Commission Direction for the 2022 Budget Preparation with Philip Smith Haines, County Administrator.
Excuse me for just a second, but Administrator Haines, did you have something that you wanted to, you were asking to speak on the comments?
You know, I just wondered on that last item, if there was.
Oh. I'm sorry, Brad was. And I apologize.
Mr. Chairman, no one had their hand raised and wanted to speak.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Administrator. Your turn now.
Philip Smith Haines, County Administrator. So we are, we are not starting to think about next year already. And in particular, next year as regard to.
Is your mic on?
I'm sorry, it was not on. Thank you. Yes, we're starting to talk about 2022 in regards to the county's budget preparations. So last month outlined a schedule for the commission that would get us on track to adopt the budget in August, as we're legally required to do. And then last week presented to you all some financial projections regarding the different funds that are tax-supported and what those look like over time. And we could play with different scenarios about how to adjust those. So today, back, asking for specific direction from the commission. The purpose of this item is not for me to talk, it's for you to talk and me to listen. So just open to anything that you want me to communicate to departments as we begin the budget preparation process. And I've laid out a couple of specific questions around, you know, whether you see the need for an increase in total tax collections, not necessarily an increase in the mill levy, but an increase in total tax collections or any specific projects that you would like to see incorporated in the 2022 budget. So with that, I'll just take your direction.
And I'll just go first here. And I just want to ask, one of the things I would like to see is that, you know, it seems like we have multiple, just in the four years that we've been here, and I've been here as a, as a commissioner, we've, we've had multiple buildings that have had roof issues, leaking caused multiple damages down inside the buildings. And I'm, I'm looking at going as, why, why do we just keep putting off things like that? To do that, I'd like to see our, our directors or the head of those departments come forth and, and in a long way before I say, hey, we got a leak, let's fix this roof and before it starts creating a damage and, and a lot of other issues. And to me, that's one of those things where I, I know that we can't raise the budget for a lot of different things. But it's like, I would, I'd like for them to come bring forth because they're the ones that know when a problem is there before it gets to the hand and, and why we keep putting it off and off until it just is destroyed and then we have to fix it.
Yeah, so I think what you're speaking about, Mr. Chair, is something that we talked about in December at our sort of goal-setting meeting, where we talked about the potential of a facility master plan. And so I'm hearing support for putting that in the 22 budget so we have those future needs identified.
Okay. Any other commissioners with any ideas or thoughts?
Well, Phil, specifically, are you speaking, I mean, I, I assume that in terms of the preparation itself, that you're not speaking, or you're not planning on changing, from your perspective, your approach from, from what it was a year ago? Am I correct in that or is there some tweaking going on here?
Thank you, Commissioner. No, I'm not planning on changing anything in terms of the layout. The only change, and that's one that we talked about last month, was to have each of the departments sit down with me before they sit down with the commission as a whole. So we've already got those scheduled with the departments. We talked about that with, at the department head meeting last week. So that's the only real change in terms of process. If there are other changes regarding process that the commission would like, I'm certainly open to those. But really, what I'm asking about today is just sort of the bigger picture things, you know? What is it that the commission really wants us to accomplish as part of the 22 budget? And what do you want us to avoid as part of that 22 budget?
Well, I can answer a couple of those questions from my perspective real quickly. But you won't be able to give me an answer back. And that is, well, we don't want to raise taxes.
Okay.
And how are we going to accomplish that? I'm guessing we probably won't be able to accomplish that. Particularly with, in light of some of the things that have gone on with our project at the Expo Center, that's going to take some capitalization to where.
on with our project at the Expo Center, that's going to take some capitalization to where we continue to contribute to that fund. The jail project is going to have some expenditures to it, even though that's financed by the sales tax increase. We continue to have an increase in equipment costs and so forth. I think one thing that's going to help us for next year, I think we don't buy new road graders next year. Is that the year?
I believe that's correct.
So, that's a million dollars right there. We've added some positions at the jail that are going to, obviously needed to be financed. That'll take that up to some degree. So, obviously, the citizens are worried about taxes. I mean, actually, it's kind of secondary on the taxes right now. We're worried about COVID, but we're going to get that behind us. But the taxes, they don't want to be taxed out of the world, you know? So, that's a goal of mine, is not to be able to raise the taxes and not cut services either. And we certainly don't want to cut services, or, you know, the things that we're trying to accomplish. I see some internal things that are more in your bailiwick, that the commission really doesn't necessarily want to guide you on. But, you know, we've talked about some redesign within your offices, things like that, that are going to be more in your ballpark, you know, for more. I'd like to see IT have a little more space in where they're working. They're on top of each other, and they don't have room to move. I would like to see us do something over across the street with the old juvenile center that's nothing more than a den for our junk, our pack rat supply, is what that amounts to. I'd like to see us do, make something out of that property, or use it for something. And the health department, I mean, they're on top of each other over there. That was a bad mistake five, 10 years ago, or whatever it was, to replenish that building and have it in the condition that's in now, you know, seven or eight years later. It's, so those are, those are some of the bigger projects that I'd like to see go down the pike. I've probably got a couple of others when I leave the room, but that, those are the ones that I'm thinking about right now.
This is Commissioner Shadwick, and I've always thought that the process works best by figuring out what services we need to provide, what services that the public wants us to provide, and then look at the mill levy. It could go up or down after that, but I think it's hard to budget when you just, when you, in the past, we've always set the mill levy first, and then figured out a budget to work with it. I'd like to, I'd like us to look at it just the opposite. Let's figure out what services, what buildings, what equipment we need, and then the mill levy falls where it may.
And Commissioner Vidrickson again, and Monty, I agree with you, and I think that's pretty much the way that I envisioned, or that I remembered that Administrator Smith Haynes laid it out for us last year. I think that was the process of which we went through as I remember it. But I certainly agree with you.
I, for one, am interested in what's happened in Topeka, how that's going to impact us here. I think you're going to have to, speaking for myself, educate me if some of these statutes or laws are passed that really, really impact local governments of how they finance and how they, how they construct their budgets. I too am not a proponent for raising taxes, but I also believe that there is an inflation rate that goes on, and it costs us more to employ and retain our employees. Our costs continue to go up, even with no new, no new services put in, just because of the cost of purchasing and employees, employee packages and such. So, I think there needs to be some type of inflation built in that helps and aids us in setting a budget. But I think it's going to be interesting what comes out of Topeka and how that impacts us.
Any other comments? Any comments from the public at all on this?
It's an esports line again. I wasn't going to speak to this, because I guess I didn't realize it was coming up. In looking at our taxes, I would like the commission to take a look at where the property values have gone over this last increase. I've talked to many people. There is a housing shortage in Solana, and it is driving the values of our homes up, which in turn is collecting you more taxes, whether you're raising the mill levy or not. The interesting thing I found when I got my increase of $16,000 this year, on top of the $26,000 I got the year before, is I looked at the properties on Santa Fe. Santa Fe that has had all this renovation done, the Stiefel Theater has a brand-new tower, their property value went down. And that's a little sad. It's like, what is going on? We, it's not fair to the citizens. You're also going to be building, there's going to be a building boom going on. There's a lot of housing needed, there's a lot of new jobs coming into town. I think you're going to be able to find your revenues without raising any kind of taxes. Thanks.
Okay, thank you. Phil, I would like you to respond to that just a little bit. Maybe you can, in a small nutshell, respond how a mill levy works versus the property tax. And just because their, their property valuation went up doesn't necessarily mean their taxes are going to go up or down. You know, if your valuation goes down, your taxes may not go down. So...
Yes, so, the, I mentioned this a little bit last week. Property taxes are unique as distinguished from income or sales taxes, right? So, income taxes are set by a rate. So, this is the rate, and if your income goes up, your tax bill goes up. If your income goes down, your tax bill goes down. Property taxes, we have complicated. And so, what happens with property taxes is that the, the appraiser values all of the properties in a given jurisdiction annually. And they have requirements that are imposed upon them by the state about maintaining certain ratios to actual sale prices. So, they're not just inventing values. They have to stay within a range of the values of comparable properties that are actually sold into the market. They release those, they transmit those values to the clerk. The clerk releases them to all the jurisdictions. The jurisdictions then set budgets, transmit those back to the clerk. The clerk applies those budgets to the underlying valuations and transmits them for the taxes. So, so, if you maintain the same rate, meaning the mill levy stays the same, and the underlying values go up, then people pay more in tax. But you don't necessarily have to maintain the same rate. The attempt in the legislature this year, this goes back to Commissioner Weiss's question earlier, there's a bill, it's actually passed both houses at this point, it's on the governor's desk for signature, that would have you ignore the mill levy and talk about the dollar amount that you raised in the prior year, and what mill levy would get that same dollar amount. So, in a situation where values are rising, it takes a smaller mill levy to get that same dollar amount of taxation. That doesn't mean people would pay less in taxes, but it means they would pay less as a, as a value of their, as a proportion of the value of their property. So, that's kind of how the system works and what's pending in the legislature.
I mean, part of the message here, to me, is the county commission does not set the appraised values. That is, that is done through the legislature, through the appraiser's office. I mean, they're the ones that are responsible to come up with that, to provide us with the money that it takes to set our budget. We don't set the appraised values.
That's correct. The appraisers, and again, as you mentioned, that's all according to state law, how they have to maintain that ratio to actual sales, yeah.
Okay. Any other questions or comments?
Yes, Ken Ritz from Solana. I beg to differ. Property taxes work the same as any other tax. You have, it's a simple multiplication. You have a given value or price or income, and you have a rate against it. The mill levy is nothing more than a rate, and no different than a sales tax rate or whatever. The issue is that folks speak about inflation. Inflation is a measure of price levels. If there's inflation, price levels go up. And if you maintain the same levy, the same rate, same sales tax rate, property tax rate, income tax rate, your revenues will move in direct proportion to the inflation level. The fallacy that we're dealing with here is that government can face inflation separate from what individuals, the private sector does. We have only one economy, and that's what we're dealing with. And all these measures that we take to provide growth in the economy, if they provide true growth, we won't need to raise the rate. The growth in the economy will reflect in the increase in revenues. If we look at the process, if we continue to raise mill levies, sales tax rates, and income tax rates, and the income tax rates are the only ones that have come down, at some point, we become confiscatory. Taxes take, take everything. And so, I, the property tax approach is no different than if you're looking at sales tax to finance a new jail. You look at what you're going to be spending on the jail, and what is going to be taxed by the sales tax, and you just divide, and then that's the rate that you need to finance the, to finance the jail. It's no different with property taxes. You can start at that and back up. So, anyway, it's...
Okay, but it is, and it is, there is a difference, because what happens is that once, let's say, once this house is built, and it's built for, let's say, $300,000, and you get, now you're the first house on the block at $300,000, you're taxed that rate, because here's what you said, your taxes are. Now, all of a sudden, you've got 15 houses around you, and they're all built at $350,000, but now your house is worth $420,000. The property that's being sold around you is what causes your tax to go up, because, just because, and that's what gets me, and this is what is...
No. Not, it does not cause your tax to go up, it causes your valuation.
Your valuation, thank you.
That's the distinction that I think we're failing to make.
Thank you, Administrator.
But if your valuation goes up, your tax goes up.
No.
No.
Not necessarily.
Because your, your mill...
Your valuation, your, your tax goes up only if the county or city's budget also goes up. That is the distinction. And I agree with you, Mr. Ritz, that a mill levy is a rate, but the difference between the mill levy and every other tax rate is those tax rates are established for long periods of time. The mill levy adjusts every single year because of the way that our budgets are set under state law. And the county's mill levy is actually lower this year than it was in the prior year, very, very slightly, but it's actually a little bit lower. And that is because of the amount of growth that we had and the budget that we levied against that growth. And so, that's, that's the distinction. And it's, it's probably meaningless to most people, but it is, the math works differently with a property tax than it does with other taxes. And that's the point I was trying to make.
Thank you for taking care of me there.
But if your income goes down, and the tax rate, your income tax rate stays, say it stays the same, then your income taxes go down.
Yes.
So, it, the parallels that matter are there. Of course, property tax is different than other taxes.
Yes.
But other taxes are different than other taxes.
Yes.
Sales tax is different than income tax, but that doesn't mean that there's, there's, it's more complicated or whatever. It's a simple multiplication. If...
Okay, and our three minutes up, we need to get going.
If you want to know what the sales tax is going to be on a car you're buying...
Yes.
You have to, you have to appraise the value of the car.
Yes.
That's not what you call it, but that's, but that's what's, that's what's involved. When you go to pay your sales tax, say, why did you pay for the car? And then you do a simple multiplication. So, there's no hocus pocus or different formula or whatever in determining the tax. If we raise mill levies, and if inflation is reflected in the value of houses, and it certainly is, I could no more buy the house I bought 35 years ago for anything like the same money that I paid then.
Oh, yeah.
And...
Okay, our time's up. We got to get going. Thank you, Ms. Ritz. Thank you for your time. All right. Any other comments? Next item?
Item number five, RFA 136-21, Employee Policies with Marilyn Lehmer, Human Resources Director.
Excuse me for just a second, but with an RFA, do we, do we not have any action? We don't have to take an action with an RFA?
Your action was to direct...
Direction.
The county administrator. So, certainly if somebody wants to make a motion in a second, that's fine. But I've written down what I heard the commission say.
Right.
So, that's what I'll proceed with unless you want to formalize that.
It's just been my, I mean, you know, when I see an RFA, that's a request for action. So, it seemed to me like we should have made a motion, I think. But maybe, if you're not requiring one, then I'm okay with that, too.
I'm perfectly happy if you make a motion, Commissioner.
All right, then I would make the motion that we approve RFA 137-21, Commission Direction for 2022 Budget Preparation with the items that were mentioned to the administrator. For him to proceed. Second motion. Okay, it's been moved and seconded that we repeat, RFA 137-21, Commission Direction for 2022 Budget Preparation. Are there any further comments? If not, I'll call for the vote. Commissioner White.
Nay.
Commissioner Weiss.
Aye.
Commissioner Vidrickson.
Aye.
Commissioner Shadwick.
Aye.
Commissioner Sparks.
Aye.
Vote in passes four to one. Next item, please?
Item number five, RFA 136-21, Employee Policies with Marilyn Lehmer, Human Resources Director.
Good morning, Commissioners. This request for action is to revise policy 40.26A, which is the progressive discipline policy, to require employees to call in at least 30 minutes prior to their start time, rather than one hour as it is reflected right now. This was brought to us via a department head that requested the change. This was brought to us via department head that requested the change. It is a policy that is negotiated with one of our bargaining units. So we did go back to the bargaining unit and discussed it and came up with a little bit of tweaked verbiage within the policy. So as we are presenting it, employees must call in 30 minutes, but it does give some flexibility to the department head or elected official should certain situations happen.
Okay. Are there any comments?
I, for one, agree that it should be, you should be notified before your work schedule starts. It puts quite a burden on road and bridge or sheriffs or any department as far as staffing to be told 30 minutes after you should have been at work that you won't be at work.
I agree.
I just think it makes common sense. And to maintain the operations of each of the departments.
I agree.
And I'm sure, and I agree 100%. The only thing being there, I do see that there is going to be a time that, let's say, because we do have a lot of employees that travel from out of town or do, and let's say you're five minutes from here and you have a blowout on your tire or a deer runs out in front of you, you're going to have those situations where that's going to be impossible to do.
Right.
Okay.
And we do have that built in.
Okay. And that's why I was saying, I know that there's other things in here that's going to set back. Okay. Any other comments? Do I have any comments from the public? It's been, I'll bring it back to the commission for more discussion or possible action.
Mr. Chairman, I move we accept by signature the employee policy as presented.
Second. It's been moved and seconded that we approve RFA 136-21, Employee Policies. Are there any further comments? I will call for a vote. Commissioner White.
Aye.
Commissioner Weiss.
Aye.
Commissioner Vidrickson.
Aye.
Commissioner Shadwick.
Aye.
Commissioner Sparks.
Aye.
Motion passes five to zero.
Thank you, Commissioner.
You bet. Thank you, Marilyn. Informational items.
Human Resources Update with Marilyn Lemur, Human Resources Director.
Good morning, Marilyn.
Good morning again.
Good seeing you again.
Yeah. So this department update is for the interval of mid-January to mid-March 21. During this time, we've had seven new hires. Thirteen people have transferred or promoted to different positions within the county, and we have three that are no longer employed. During this time, we have moved to an online entry-level corrections officer exam, which we hope that will reduce the amount of time that candidates have to dedicate to the selection process, and it seems to be working well. We've been using it a few weeks now. The frequency of fraudulent unemployment claims for the county has reduced considerably. I think the last time we had one was mid-February. The frequency of leave time related to COVID-19 has reduced, as we're seeing with the numbers reducing in the county as well. We have distribution of the W2s and 1095s, which are the Affordable Care Act forms. Those have all been distributed to employees. And then with the approval of the Corrections Officer Referral Program that the commissioners did approve for seven positions, we have had five successful hires, and one is still pending in the hiring process, and so we do have one incentive left to award. So we're hoping that employees will make a referral to a successful candidate for the position of corrections officers. Right now, the plans are, of course, to fill vacant positions, sitting on 19 regular positions and three seasonal positions, with corrections officer being our biggest need right now. We do have a new wage structure that is going in effect for law enforcement that goes into effect April 5th, so we hope that has an effect on our hiring abilities. We have a blood drive in April, and we'll be soon working on the salary and benefits projections for the budget process. Our health plan right now is running a little hot at 107% of the expenses to funding ratio. We hope that that will level off for the rest of the plan year. Dental is at 110%. We've got three claims on our plan right now that have hit the stop-loss deductible, and we do get reimbursements from the stop-loss carrier on those. And then the HR budget is about 14% of used, and it's in line with the historical averages for HR operations. And I'm available for any questions.
I don't have any. Any other comments or questions by the commission?
Marilyn, do you think the health plan, the dental plan having such a high percentage of usage could be that people didn't do things and waited, and now this quarter, they've started going back to their dentist or making those?
I don't think so. We've had some catastrophic events. Insurance is kind of a roller coaster. It goes up and down as far as high claims. We've been very, very fortunate for a number of years to kind of maintain level. So I do think it's probably our turn that we're going to see an increase in our premiums. But we do have lots of plan year left to where, you know, it could level out a little bit.
Thank you. Any other comments? Thank you, Marilyn.
Thank you.
Next item.
Item number two, County Administrators' Update.
Morning, Administrator.
Yeah, good morning again, Commissioners. So just a few items to update the commission on this morning. To start with, we have a couple of letters that we're asking the chair to sign. Those were included in your package today. We have some letters of appreciation. There are some folks in Fire District Number Six who retired from their volunteer roles and asking for letters of appreciation certificates to be signed. Also asking the chair to sign an application for a .gov web address. The feds are making a big push to try and get as many state and local governments onto the .gov extension as possible. As you know, for years, we've had the celine.org, but the .orgs get confusing for people, and so the feds are trying to make sure that folks go to the .gov, which they feel is more secure. I don't think we're going to abandon celine.org anytime soon, but we want to have that .org reserved for us if we decide to transition. And while we're speaking about the website, that is one of the items that the commission had talked about in your strategic planning session at the end of last year. And I wanted to let you know that we do have an RFP that staff has prepared that is ready to go out the door, and so we'll be sending that out and hopefully bringing something back to you for web upgrades here in the next couple of months. Switching gears just a little bit, a few weeks ago, you all approved a bid for a truck out at Public Works, and there were two local dealers that both bid on that and awarded to the low bidder. Because of what is going on in the automotive industry and the lack of supplies, particularly around semiconductors, that supplier has notified us that they are not going to be able to deliver that truck. They have searched around at other lots, and they just cannot find a truck that meets those specifications. So we looked at the purchasing policy, and it really doesn't cover this kind of a situation. So our plan, since there was only one other bidder, our plan is to just purchase that truck at the second high bidder. They have assured us that they do have a truck that will meet the specifications, but wanted to bring that to the commission just in case anybody.
Can you be more specific? I mean, the trucks, we've been buying trucks from $250,000 dump trucks to a $20,000 pickup.
No, this was the pickup commissioner. It was the one that was recently awarded to a GMC dealership and was, the Ford dealership was the alternate. I think there were $200, $300 difference in the bid price.
Okay, I'm recalling that because there was another truck situation we bought here a week or so ago that there was like a $20,000 or $30,000 difference.
No, this is, this is not one of the big trucks. This is the crew truck.
Well, I think that lends to another thing. I mean, I'm okay with that, but it lends to a policy perhaps that we should think about, and that is when someone bids a equipment piece, whatever, and then they can't deliver and, you know, because the second low bidder is not obligated to give us that price now.
They are not, but we did call them up and say, hey, would you be willing to honor? And they said they would, so.
No, I think it's certainly a policy that should be looked at.
Okay. And we can do that, but in the meanwhile, unless anyone objects, we'll go forward with getting that forward.
You know, with the amount of purchases there, the difference, I'm okay with that, but.
Okay.
We need to pick up, and it is, it's, and then studying a little bit is, that semiconductor thing has really caused a lot of issues with the automobile industry. Yep.
Yeah, it's really surprising that.
Yep.
Oh, looks like maybe our Zoom has been lost.
You know, a thought that comes to my mind, you know, is a penalty when they can't perform, that they would pay the difference between their low bid and the next bid when they, I'm just throwing it out as a thought. Obviously, we can't do that now, but.
Right. I mean, that's an interesting idea, yeah. The, I'm not sure how we would, unless we required a bid security of some kind, I'm not sure how we would enforce that. But that's, that's an interesting idea, yeah. So the last thing that I wanted to mention to the commission today is the American Rescue Plan Act. So this is stimulus three, four, five, whatever number we're up to now. This is the most recent act of Congress that was passed and signed into law last week. You may have heard in the news that there's money included in it for states and local governments. So as you're aware, last summer, the state decided to pass through 400 million of the billion dollars that they received in CARES Act funding to counties, and Celine County's share of that was just over 11 million, but we were required to turn around and share that with cities and school districts. This time around, we get our money directly from the U.S. Treasury. It does not go through the state of Kansas. And the cities and schools get their own allocations, so this money is all ours. The question, the first question is, how much is all ours? So originally, the National Association of Counties had posted an estimate on their website of $10,610,221. Then government finance officers published an estimate of $10,598,602. And most recently, NACO has posted a revised estimate of $10,516,411. So that's about $100,000 swing in a month's time, so we're not sure exactly how much we're getting, but it's something in the neighborhood of $10.5 million. So the good news is that unlike the CRF money that we received last summer, we have more than three months to spend this. We actually have three and a half years to spend this funding through the end of December of 2024. There are a few different stated purposes for the funding in the act, one of which is revenue replacement, replacement of revenue that local governments lost or increased costs that we incurred, both due to COVID-19. As you know, we ended the 2020 budget year pretty well, did somewhat better than we expected, but there are three specific line items in our budget that I can relate back to COVID-19 losses. And those three total about $353,735 in lost revenue. We've also incurred $24,431 since the beginning of January for emergency sick leave due to COVID that was not reimbursed. We reimbursed everything through December, but that's what's been incurred starting in January 1. So you can tell that total is well shy of a half a million, which leaves us $10 million to spend on something else. It does have to be related to response and recovery with COVID-19. So I've been talking with the Salina Area Chamber about the need in the community, whether there's still businesses that are out there that are needing funding. I've been talking with the airport authority about whether some of that funding could be used to help us restore air service that was lost due to the pandemic. I've been talking with the city manager of Salina regarding whether the city and county could partner together and address some other needs in the community, like the housing need that was referenced earlier. So there's just a lot of unknowns. Oh, I've also sent out a letter to all the folks who did receive our CRF funding yesterday and, sorry, the folk, yesterday, I sent a letter to all the folks who received the CRF last year and asked them to let me know if they have specific needs as well. Again, the good news is we have a few years to actually come up with a plan and spend the funding, but they did front-load the money, so we should actually get the first half of the funding, or about a little over $5 million, within 60 days of last week. So it is not one of these things that, you know, while we have time, it's not an unlimited amount of time to just sit around on our hands. So one of my thoughts is that we will probably need to engage somebody who is pretty familiar with federal requirements on this one. As you know, last summer, we tried to keep our administrative expenses on the CRF as low as possible so that we could keep as much money flowing out into the community as possible. And, you know, I think that was the right choice because the state was the actual grant recipient in that, and they engaged folks to do federal compliance work, and, you know, we've corresponded with them. This time around, as I said, it's Celine County that's on the hook, not the state of Kansas, so I do feel like we would be better served to engage the kinds of folks that have those federal requirements nailed down. So I will be working on an RFP to that end. I got a copy of the RFP that folks in Johnson County released last summer, and we'll be working on that. So it's one of those good news situations, but also good news that creates new headaches. And so there you go. Be happy to answer any questions.
My question, Commissioner Vidrickson. My question, Commissioner Vidrickson, um, is that original, that, that front-loaded three-hundred-and-fifty-two-thousand that you've already identified, will we be able to direct, direct deposit that straight into our general fund? Without, I mean, you've identified it as a cost that, uh, for, uh, replacement, revenue replacement.
Yes. So, um, I've identified it, uh, but I haven't seen the Treasury regulations yet. So, the first question is, is the Treasury going to look at, let us look at specific line items where we lost revenue? Or are they going to force us to look at our budget as a whole? Because if we have to look at our budget as a whole, we didn't lose any money.
I get it.
If we're allowed to look at individual line items, then those are the three line items that, that I think we could reasonably claim. In terms of depositing that, I, I would anticipate that we would create a new special fund for this, just as we did for CRF. We'd probably put the entire amount in there and then transfer it to the general fund upon specific authorization. But I'm assuming sort of the root of your question, which is, yes, that money would be, if we, if we, um, if we are allowed to reimburse ourselves for that lost revenue, that money would be free and clear, up for grabs, uh, in terms of rolling into our budget for next year.
So, so the answer is yes, maybe?
Yes, maybe. Correct.
Okay.
That's a short answer.
Thank you.
Question, do, does the federal government say how that money needs to be held? Can it be held in, can, can the county treasurer put it, uh, in treasury bills or, or some, some method that there is some interest bearing on it? Or does it have to stay in just a separate pot by itself and, uh, not give you that capability?
That's an excellent question, and I don't have the answer for it yet. I, again, expect that to be in the guidance we receive from the Treasury. As you know, we could not accrue interest on the coronavirus relief funding that we got last year. I am hopeful that we will be able to accrue interest on this money. But typically, when they let you accrue interest on it, they also make you spend that interest on that program rather than, than transferring that interest income out. So, I don't, I don't know for sure, but I'm thinking we might get, uh, interest on this money, but again, have to reinvest it in the program.
Okay. Any other comments?
Thank you.
You bet. Thank you, Commissioner. Next item?
Item number three, Commissioners' comments.
Any comments by the Commissioners? Next item?
Item number four, announcements.
I don't have any. Any announcements by anybody? Okay. Hearing none? Are there any comments by the Commissioners? Anything? Okay. Meeting adjourned. Thank you. And thank you, the public, for attending today.